Good evening. I call this meeting the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees to order at 6:01. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present at this meeting that has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Acts Governance Code 551. And at this time, we will adjourn to executive session pursuant to the following Open Meetings Act of 551-074. So there you go. All right, we'll be back in about 30. Excuse me, is Reverend Joe Childs here? Yes, this is Mr. Paris, and welcome. And if you would lead us in prayer and invocation, please.
I'll wing it, I'll find something.
There you go, there you go. Will stand?
Please. Let's pray. Father, we are so grateful for all that you do for us, for all your gifts. Lord, we thank you for the leadership that you've instilled, Lord, for the vision, for the community, for the school, for the district, for the teachers. Lord, I pray that you would continue to give us wisdom to guide us, Lord, that you would, the best-laid plans of men would be laid before you. And, Lord, I pray that you would continue to bless the efforts of MISD and to give us favor as we move into the future. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. We can just, okay, if you will stand for the pledge, we'll do it. There you go. Kids are not here today. Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On this Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. It is time for our board moment. We had a very good graduation of our six high schools. As you know, this is our first year for our new high school, Vanguard High School, and it was, students had been there for three years that came in as sophomores. So next year will be those that have been there for four years, but it was exciting. It was exciting and a very proud moment for MISD. Anyone else have the things they would like to say about our graduation or something that you attended?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to mention that we're starting to get ready for the legislative session that starts next year, 2025, and there's a lot to talk about in Austin. So we're going to be there often, and we have already started conversations with our senators and state reps. So that's gonna, that's gonna take some effort.
Yes. One of the things that, as an audience, you need to remember, that we are a public school entity. We are not private and we're not charter. And public school is what educates 5.2 million students in the state of Texas, not charters or private. So we are very much advocates for public education, very, very important to us. Anyone else have anything they need to say? Okay.
Oh, Madam President, I know I'm not a board member, but I do have a moment.
All right.
And I do, I have a moment. So last Friday, Dr. Morris and myself, and attended the JROTC Leadership STEM Academy. And if you would have attended that, you would have been so proud of our JROTC cadets. They were amazing in the projects and their leader, in the display of their leadership skills. And we were just in awe of what Colonel Ciano and Colonel Burton have been doing for our young cadets. And I just wanted to recognize their work and their efforts because it was just amazing. We went to A&amp;M Commerce, we spent the day out there with them, had lunch with them, conversations with kids. It was just a great experience for us, and I know you would have been proud.
Well, good, thank you, thank you. All right. Ms. Jobe, is there anyone for the board moment? I mean, for the audience? Okay, all right, okay. This is an item, a consent item is consent agenda. I need a motion for this. Is there a motion?
No.
Okay, Mr. Carbo, is there a second? Second, by Mr. Seward. All those, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Now, reports of the superintendent personnel, a bunch.
Yes, Madam President, and I'll have to mention, thank you for our policy and our authority to hire with a summer to ensure that we get the most qualified people in the positions as fast as we possibly can. So I want to thank you for that. And we're going to start with the Director of Innovation, and I believe our CTO Kara Jackson will introduce that person.
All right. Thank you. Board, I would love to introduce you to Ty Priniker as our new Director of Innovation. Ty has completed 17 years in the field of education. She started her career as an eighth grade social studies teacher at Kimbrough Middle School. She later transitioned to the, transitioned to the Instructional Technology Team where she served as an instructional technology coach for six years before moving into the Coordinator of Innovation role for the last three years. Ty earned a Bachelor of Science degree from the University of Texas in Dallas and a Master of Education degree in technology leadership from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Please welcome Ty Priniker.
Good evening, Board and Dr. Rivera. I just want to express my sincere gratitude for this incredible opportunity. God has really blessed me by expanding my territory, and I want to make a promise to do everything I can to make a difference for our students, our educators, and the families that are in our community. As a proud student of Mesquite ISD, I remember the impact that dedicated educators like Gail Carr and Nancy Gray and Allison French, Angie Nichols and Elaine Malone had on me, and they ignited my passion for learning while holding me to the highest of standards. And that passion is still very present with me today. I love building curiosity, making learning relevant, tackling tough challenges that we face, and maximizing the capacity of others. I want to thank Kara for taking a chance on me as an ITC nine years ago and investing in my growth and leadership, and I want to thank her for just cultivating an ownership culture and just creating an environment where I've always felt empowered to learn and just own the work that I do every day. Karen, our paths first crossed when I was a baby teacher in a classroom across the hall from yours, and I don't think I fully understood the magic of Signora Morris until, until this year, and one year under your leadership wasn't, wasn't enough. So thank you for being a multiplier and for your, your belief in me. And last, to the Instructional Technology Team, their brilliance and dedication are a constant source of motivation for me, and I count every day working with them as joy, and I can't wait to do big things in the near future.
Thank you.
All right, Madam President, the next, next position is going to be a Director of Continuous Improvement, and I believe Alicia Austin is going to do the introduction.
Okay. So it is my pleasure to introduce to you Dr. Holly Grubbs.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Dr. Grubbs is a dedicated educational leader with over 23 years of experience, all within MISD. She's also a proud graduate of Potteet High School. She has a Doctor of Education in Educational Leadership and Policy from Southern Methodist University, where she was honored with the Dean's Award for her research on distributed leadership. With her extensive experience as a school principal, she has been recognized for her leadership, receiving the Principal of the Year Award and the Tepsa Student Leadership Award. Throughout her career, Dr. Grubbs has gained a deep understanding of school programs, curriculum development, and effective leadership strategies. And I, for one, am grateful to have her on our team. We've had a great first year together and looking forward to many more.
Thank you.
Good evening and thank you. Reflecting on my 23 years with Mesquite ISD, reminded of our core values, commitment to our community, cultivating a positive culture, prioritizing people first, and embracing continuous learning. Our community is our strength, and we are always better together. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the principals who allowed me to walk beside them through this year's improvement journey. Your leadership and collaboration are valued, and we've made a positive difference in students' lives. Our collective achievements are a testament to the power of our community. I transitioned to the executive principal position one year ago, but I'll never forget the Rutherford family and community. Thank you for entrusting me with the privilege of leading you for 13 years and allowing my sons Wyatt and Eli to be a part of our journey during their elementary years. Rutherford will always hold a special place in my heart as a place where the best begins. Together, we achieved numerous accomplishments, and I could not be prouder of the work that continued this year under the exceptional leadership of Cassie Wilburn and Kristy Carter. Cultivating a positive culture is essential to our success. I also want to sincerely thank the board for your profound engagement in my educational journey. It all began when one of you signed my high school diploma. Whether visiting my campus and lending a hand in the cafeteria, dropping off cookies to my home when I was sick, or sharing moments of happiness at a Skeeter football game and eating catfish, your dedication has not just fostered, but significantly shaped our future and made a positive school culture. People are at the heart of everything we do. While I could share countless stories from my time in Mesquite, what stands out in this moment is the encouragement and support of my family, friends, and coworkers who have walked this educational leadership journey with me and never left my side. To my husband, Chris, you are the cornerstone of my strength, and I deeply value your unwavering support as we navigate life together. Continuous learning is essential for improvement, and as I step into this new role, my mission remains clear, a desire to impact the hearts of people, inspire hope for tomorrow, and ignite a desire for service and leadership. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. The board member she was talking about is Mr. Bangham.
Well, Madam President, our next position is Director of Facilities. So I believe the distinguished Mr. Gilbert and Scott Owens will do the introduction here. Come on, Scott, you dress for the occasion.
Is he wearing a tie?
Yes. This assignment for Mr. Daniel Contreras for Director of Facility, so it means a lot for, for the support. And Scott Owens, thank you very much for the recommendation of Daniel. I know you worked with him for several years, you hired him about 31 years ago, so I want to thank you for making that recommendation. Mr. Contreras has worked for Mesquite ISD for 31 years. His first assignment in the district was in the plumbing department as a journeyman plumber. He earned an irrigator license that was the district's irrigator. He eventually earned his master's plumber license and was promoted to a supervisory role. He's currently a facilities project manager and has held the position for more than seven years. Additionally, he holds an asbestos program manager license. Mr. Contreras attended Mesquite schools from elementary through high school, a true, true product of Mesquite ISD, and he graduated from the West Mesquite High School, in the top 5% in the class of 1985. His wife Sarah is the librarian at Galloway Elementary School, and their youngest Addie and Thomas attend Mesquite ISD, and Elizabeth and Michael are graduates of MISD. On a side note, Mr. Contreras recently confided in me that, deep in his heart, he is a diehard Saints fan. So with that, I'll introduce you, Daniel Contreras.
That's right.
If I have to be a Saints fan, I can't accept the position. I am a Cowboy fan, for sure. But that is my second favorite team now. I would like to thank the school board, Dr. Rivera, Mr. Prado, and Scott Owens for this opportunity. The school district has been very good to me and my family. I appreciate the great people I've been able to be around, all the way from my first grade teacher, Mrs. Dubose, all the way to Lanny Frazier, my football coach, Coach Talbot, and numerous other great teachers. The group I work with in facilities is one of the top groups I've ever worked with. I've done a lot of commercial work, and they by far do some of the best work I've ever seen. We have an incredible staff, from our office staff to all the employees. So I appreciate this opportunity, and I will continue to work hard and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next position is the Kimbrough Middle School Principal. I'll let Dr. Janine Fields, Deputy Superintendent, make that introduction.
Good evening, trustees. I would like to introduce to you Lacy Starnes, the new principal of Kimbrough Middle School.
Come on up, Lacy.
You can tell from the applause that she is a beloved member of the Mesquite ISD team. Lacy Starnes has completed 15 years in the field of education, all within Mesquite ISD. Throughout her career, she has served as an assistant principal and instructional dean at West Mesquite High School, an assistant principal at Dr. James Terry Middle School, and an instructional coach, English teacher, and volleyball coach at Dr. John D. Horn High School. Ms. Starnes holds a bachelor's degree in English from Texas A&amp;M University at Commerce and a master's degree in education administration from Lamar University. Congratulations, Lacy.
Good evening. Dr. Rivera, School Board, thank you for this opportunity to speak and for believing in my ability to serve Kimbrough Middle School. Joining me tonight are my parents, Loretta and Alton Starnes, who have been instrumental in shaping the person that I am today. I also want to acknowledge the various friends and former colleagues that are here tonight. Your support, past and present, is deeply appreciated. To my West Mesquite family, I love you all, and I will continue to cheer on your great work over on the west side. Additionally, I would like to thank the remarkable leaders who have invested in me over the years. While I can't name everyone tonight, I must thank some. Bruce Perkins, Dr. Stacy Carpenter, Ashley Cochran, Kelly Pruitt, Dr. Hammett, Dr. Morris, Dr. Faulkner, Mr. Sarpy, and Dr. Goss. I could go on and on, but I'll have to stop there because I'd like to take more of this moment to share a deeper thanks of what I consider a promise kept by this amazing district and the teachers I had along the way. School board, though I've been with Mesquite ISD professionally for 15 years, my journey actually began in 1991 as a first grader at Beasley Elementary with my teacher, Mrs. Karen Courtney, whose joy for learning became my own. It was also at Beasley that I first found my love for music from Mrs. Stokes, my music teacher, who is here tonight. And well, there was Mrs. Hill, my second grade teacher, who is also here with us tonight. Let's just say that one day in her class, I made a bad decision, and I feared that she wouldn't like me anymore. I remember arriving the next day terrified, but she greeted me with a hug. Her grace for me became my grace for others. Mrs. Hill, I'm still sorry for throwing those markers. But you see, these teachers played a foundational role in shaping the person you see here today. My time at Beasley was a promise kept. When I went on to Kimbrough, though my focus was on being an athlete, it was actually choir with Kelly Flores that impacted me the most. She is also here tonight. As a seventh grader lacking confidence, she helped me to find my voice and a sense of community and belonging. She gave me my first leadership position as president of Select Choir, seeing potential in me that I couldn't yet see for myself. Her investment in me is why I'm here today. My time at Kimbrough was undoubtedly another promise kept. At Potteet, I learned critical thinking thanks to my English teacher, Mrs. Madeline Hill, who joins us here tonight. And in 10th grade, it was Mrs. Terry, Dr. Terry's wife, who taught me that if I would just stop talking, I would learn math, and it turns out she was right. And finally, there was my volleyball coach, Lisa Leseski, who couldn't be here tonight, but I will tell you that my drive and my passion in any work that I do comes from her influence. She taught me to cultivate resilience that no challenge could shatter. When I was diagnosed with cancer just over a year ago, that lesson became my anchor. Potteet High School was another promise kept. My teachers always ensured that my dignity was a given. They created a sense of belonging for me so that I felt safe to grow. They put me in leadership positions to show me that I could be a difference maker, and all of these educators worked together to ensure that I was made to excel. They were the Mesquite promise in motion decades before the Mesquite promise was named. As the new principal of Kimbrough Middle School, I am ready to carry that level of promise forward. To Kimbrough students, parents, and staff, I am excited to be a guardian of your hope, to clear the way for each of you to go after your greatness, and to join in step with you to ensure that Kimbrough continues its quest for excellence. I'm ready to serve as your biggest fan, your principal, and your promise keeper. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, we also have several assistant principals and coordinators that will be introduced, and that honor will belong to Ms. Laura Jobe.
Thank you, Dr. Rivera. First, if you'll stand when I call your name, we have Dr. Nedra Johnson. Stay standing while we talk about you. You're going to be the new assistant principal at Hodges Elementary. She's completed 21 years in the field of education. Her career began as a high school special education teacher in Shreveport, Louisiana. Dr. Johnson also served as a middle school reading and social studies teacher in Oklahoma and Georgia before moving back to Texas. She has taught all content areas in elementary and middle school in Dallas ISD, where she has served as an instructional specialist for the past seven years. Dr. Johnson earned a Bachelor of Science in Education from Grambling State University, a Master's in Curriculum Assessment and Instruction from Walden University, a Master's in Leadership Policy and Studies from the University of Texas at Arlington, and a Doctorate in Teacher Leadership from Walden University. Congratulations.
Go Hodges, yes.
Mr. Jeff Casper. Mr. Casper is the new assistant principal at McDonald Middle School. He's a member of the prestigious Apple Corps and a proud product of Mesquite ISD, having attended Thompson Elementary, Berry Middle School, and John Horn High School. Jeff has 14 years in education, 11 of which were spent teaching and coaching at West Mesquite High School. He also served as a social studies facilitator for K-12 students in another district before returning to Mesquite ISD and Bruneland Vanguard High School as a dual-credit instructor. Jeff received his bachelor's degree from the University of North Texas and his master's degree from UT Arlington. Congratulations. Maritza Diaz. Maritza is the new assistant principal at Horn High School, and she's completed 13 years in the field of education. Her career began as a high school math teacher in Socorro ISD in El Paso. She began her MISD career in 2013 as an Algebra I teacher and has served as a lead and mentor teacher, PLC facilitator, and administrative intern, all at Horn High School. Maritza earned her Bachelor of Science in Mathematics from the University of Texas at El Paso, and a Master's in Curriculum Instruction, as well as her principal certification from the University of Texas at Arlington. Congratulations, Ms. Diaz. Amber Poe. Ms. Poe is the new assistant principal at West Mesquite High School, and she has completed 19 years in the field of education. Her career began as a sixth-grade self-contained teacher in Richland Park, Illinois. In 2012, Ms. Poe moved to Irving ISD, where she has since served as a fifth-grade reading teacher, a reading interventionist, academic specialist, and most recently as an elementary assistant principal. Ms. Poe received her Bachelor of Science in Education from Northeastern State University and a Master's of Arts in Educational Administration and Supervision from Governor State University. Congratulations, Ms. Poe. Mr. Ty Whitmire. Mr. Whitmire is the new assistant principal at West Mesquite High School also. He has completed 13 years in the field of education, and his career began in Dallas ISD, where he taught at the middle school he attended. From there, Mr. Whitmire served as a special education department head in Dallas ISD, and then Garland ISD. Since 2019, Mr. Whitmire has served as an assistant principal at Ausley Junior High in Arlington ISD. Mr. Whitmire earned his Bachelor of Science from Prairie View A&amp;M and a Master of Science in Education from Lamar University. Congratulations. And next is Lindsay Paris. Ms. Paris is the new coordinator of family and community engagement, also known as FACE. Lindsay is a product of Mesquite ISD. She attended Moss Elementary School, Agnew Middle School, and graduated from Mesquite High School in 2005. She received a Bachelor of Applied Arts and Sciences from Howard Payne University in 2009, and Master of Arts in Organizational Leadership in 2022 from Lincoln Christian University. In 2018, Ms. Paris became the early literacy and business community liaison to oversee replay talk. Congratulations, Ms. Paris. Victoria Ihogu. She is our new coordinator. She is our new coordinator of science, and she has nine years of experience in education, all in Mesquite ISD. She taught high school science for six years before moving into the role of TEAC's Alignment Facilitator for Science in July of 2021. She earned her bachelor's degree and one master's degree from UT Arlington. Her second master's degree is from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Congratulations, Ms. Ihogu. And our last recognition of the evening is Ms. Liz Rimmler. Ms. Rimmler is the new coordinator of Professional Learning. She's been serving Mesquite ISD since 1999, when she started as a fourth-grade teacher at Shaw Elementary. She has since served as a curriculum instruction specialist for the district, an early literacy instructional specialist at Shaw Elementary, and since 2019 as a facilitator for the Advanced Academics Department. Liz received her bachelor's degree from Bloomsburg University, Master's from Texas A&amp;M Commerce, and her principal certification from Lamar University. Congratulations, Ms. Rimmler.
Congratulations to all of you. And if you will wait here, we have one thing we'd like to move up on the agenda, is issue certifications of election and to administer the oath of office for Place Six and Place Seven. This is an action item, so do we have a...
Madam President, move to approve.
Okay. From Mr. Seward, and a second for... Okay. We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by the same sign? Motion carries. I believe we're going to have two new... Yeah, you and I get to do the...
The answer.
Yeah, oh, okay. Thank you.
Aye, Elaine Hornsby.
Aye, Elaine Hornsby.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of this office of.
Duties of the office of.
School trustee, Place Six.
School trustee, Place Six.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the states.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Of the state of Texas. Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And of the laws of the United States.
And of the laws of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Ms., Madam President, if you don't mind, those of you who are newly appointed administrators, we'd love to get your photo out in the hall during the break, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Hey, they're going to have to spread out and, like, spread out.
Oh, my mic, sorry. Career in Technology is Karaja. You can hear me? Okay, good. You're on. Yes.
You're supposed to lip sync like this, too. Now, there's trouble for you right there. I'm taking notes this time, Chris.
Oh, I love that.
Okay. I brought the whole crew this time, so we're excited to get to show you all the exciting things that CTE has done this past year. And I'm only going to give you some of the... Make sure I get this right. Make sure... I'm just going to give you all some of the numbers, some of the data that we've had this year, and then I'm going to let them tell you all the good, fun, other stuff. So, all right. So, this year, CTE, we had, in our dual-credit, we had 640 hours earned last year. This year was 879, so we had an increase of 239 hour, college credit hours from last year, which is $69,441 saved for our MISD families. The dual-credit courses are offered within our Ready, Set, Teach Child Guidance, Automotive, and Fire programs. Our industry-based certifications, we had an increase of 940 IBCs from last year, so we're very proud of that. Not all of those are, go up to accountability, but they're all certifications and they're all earned by our students, so it's great. Okay. Our career prep classes, we had, which is our work program, we had 155,274 hours worked. Together, they all earned $1.96 million. And we have 109 career prep partners, and these kids all earned all this money while being full-time students in our district.
On to me. No, I got it. Hello, I'm Kelly Brown, one of the CTE coordinators, and I'm going to talk about a few exciting projects that are going on in the areas that I support. First, we've been working on expanding our welding lab in V-Building at Mesquite High School. The final phase is happening as we speak, and it's going to be ready to open for the upcoming school year, and we're doubling that space to 7,500 square feet. One of the new pieces of equipment, we went ahead and got in this school year that our students have had the pleasure of working with, is a Livearc simulator. So, we're practicing our simulation welds and so forth, saving material before we get in there and do our actual welds, so that's exciting. Another program, our automotive technology and collision programs at Vanguard High School, we've been going through a two-year accreditation evaluation with ASC. We were approved in February, and so this adds a lot of good things to these programs. So, we'll be able to add more dual-credit hours for the goal to have a Level One cert for these students through Dallas College. Also, it opens up our industry partners and dealerships and shops that are wanting to work with us, so we're excited to expand the student internships and so forth with them. Another exciting thing for our automotive collision and tech programs, they've worked on several of these Cobra kit cars over many years, but we just sold this one in our auction, and it's going to Time Machine Cars in Crosbyton, Texas. So, we were excited about that, and it was fun to see the students get excited about that project. Also, with our law enforcement program, Mesquite ISD Law Enforcement hosted our first-ever FBI Day. We had Forney ISD, Rockwall, Garland, and Richardson ISD law enforcement students all come over to the PDC, and we had several people from the FBI come and talk about their careers and what path they came in law enforcement to get where they are. So, that was exciting, and we hope to continue that relationship and the event to get bigger and bigger each year. Also, with our law enforcement program, our practicum in law students, it's housed over at North Mesquite, but remember, this is a cross-entity course, so all five traditional high school students are, they're part of this program. We were awarded the Education Partner of the Year for Sharing Life. Our practicum students, every Wednesday, go to Sharing Life and restock the grocery shelves, and they've really enjoyed giving back to the community in that way. So, we were proud of that award. Also, another exciting program that we opened this year was our veterinary science. It was a pilot year this year for our 10th graders at North Mesquite High School, and it will open up to all five traditional high schools for next school year. It will be a three-year program, and our students will be able to earn a couple of different certificates, including a vet med assistant. And we eventually want to expand that program to be, offer grooming services and some boarding and so forth, so we're getting to move into that lab this fall as well. And so, that was our old construction lab at North Mesquite High School, so it has a big refresh there. Last one of my project areas is with our construction department at Vanguard. We have partnered with Chesmar Homes and our Operation Tiny House, and this is a program that assists homeless veterans get into a home. So, we have created, built this home, trailer home, for those homeless veterans.
Hi there. I'm Leigh Farley. I'm one of the CTE coordinators, and one of the programs I support is our Teaching and Training Program, which you are probably very familiar with, with our future educators. So, next year in 2425, we will start our, officially start, the Mesquite ISD Made to Teach PTech, which is an opportunity for our students... Thank you. Click away. Because I get taken this way. Feel free to click. So, these students have an opportunity to come into high school and earn an associate's degree upon high school graduation, and this gets them one step closer to becoming teachers for us in the future. We had a great kickoff celebration this spring with our Made to Teach. We did a, I wouldn't say mini, it was kind of a big deal, a professional learning day. We had a national guest speaker with Get Your Teach on, her name's Lenisha Tab, and the kids had an amazing time. We also had a middle school day for those kids that are interested in coming into high school. Following that, part of the Made to Teach PTech is our middle school students are going to have an opportunity to get a jumpstart on their pathway to become a teacher by taking the Principles of Education and Training Course during their eighth-grade year for high school credit. The class was piloted at McDonald and Frazier this past year and will open up to more of our middle schools next year. This year, we had, and thanks to y'all for doing this for us every year, 25 Ready, Set, Teach seniors were offered their guaranteed teaching contract. And as you know, this contract allows them to come back, graduate from our schools, attend to college or university, receive their teaching certification, and come back to us as educators. And we cannot wait to see them in our classrooms with our own students in four years. And the most exciting thing is that we had two of our former Ready, Set, Teach students that have come back to Mesquite ISD, and they were actually, they were given their guaranteed teacher contract at the end of their senior year, but they were actually just named first-class teachers in Mesquite ISD, and we are very proud of them.
Okay, so, my name is Chelsea Hoag, and I'm a facilitator here in CTE, and I get to tell you about the rest of the cool things that we're doing. So, the same night as the first-class teacher celebration, we had six of our teachers get recognized this year, which is a very big deal. These teachers have done a phenomenal job this year, their first year in the classroom, and they have just brought just a wealth of knowledge from their individual fields for our students, so we have just loved having them this year. We also got to host the MISD Film Festival this year, and then this film festival is for our animation and AVP students, and they created films that were voted on via YouTube views, and then those students got to come to Vanguard, they watched their videos, we had popcorn and candy for them, the whole thing, and they won awards based on the films that they created, so it was a very, very cool day for them. We got to have our first CTE showcase and silent auction earlier this semester, and so we were able to show off all of our programs to the community. We invited community members, we invited all the way down to kindergarten, because we want kids to start seeing us very, very early so that they know who we are by the time they get to middle and high school. And so, we got to show off our programs, but also we did a silent auction. And so, we got to showcase some of the items that our students are able to create. We got to auction a fire pit, there were baked goods, manicure, gift certificates, there was all kinds of things, but we also were very blessed by the community, and that discount tire donated for, a gift certificate to four tires. Walmart donated a Nintendo Switch, and so when I got that phone call, I was like, is this a prank? This cannot be real. But it was incredible that we got to do this for our students. And with the money that we raised from that silent auction, we were able to give four $500 scholarships to four of our current seniors, or they just graduated. These seniors, a lot of them will be going into the health care profession, is their calling, and one is being called into the accounting field. And so, we will be seeing Dallas College, Texas Women's University, Gremlin State University, and Yale in the fall. They have very big plans, and we were very excited to get to be a part of those plans. Speaking of big plans, this year, along with our showcase and silent auction, if you didn't know, February is National CTE Month, and so our district allowed us to have an official CTE Month here in MISD, and we partnered with Library Services as well as our elementary counselors to get to do guidance lessons on our elementary campuses, as well as bring out books that show different career paths for our students, because like we said, we want them thinking big early. And so, the whole thing was about what they can be in MISD, and we had big dreams of teachers and police officers and lemonade stand owners and all the things. And we even had some students from Range Elementary come over to North Mesquite and their culinary lab to perfect their parfait skills. So, we have little chefs over at Range, but it was very sweet to get to partner with them this year. Okay. We have our students that compete in our different CTSOs, so we have everything from our business students, our culinary students, our future teachers. We have all of these organizations for our kids. So, this year, we had 606 students compete at the regional level, 279 competed at the state level, and we had 40 advanced at the national level. And so, this summer, most of them are traveling for nationals, and we're sending them to Seattle, Orlando, Atlanta, DC, Houston, Chicago, and so they're getting to have these big experiences because of our school district, so we're very grateful for that. One of these in particular groups is our Pro Start teams, and if you're not very familiar about the Pro Start teams, these are for our culinary kiddos, and these kids are asked to create, the culinary teams at least, are asked to create a three-course, very high-end meal in one hour with no electricity or running water. One of our teams from North Mesquite made third place in the state, and they're competing against other CTE campuses, and it burns those CT campuses up if a traditional high school beats them, so it is an extremely big deal that we got third place. While they don't get to move on to nationals, because only first place does, it is a very big deal for West Mesquite. Another one of our things for our culinary program, the culinary program at Potteet was awarded a Mesquite Educational Foundation grant last year or the year before, and they had a very bright lime-green smoker created by Big Phil Smokers and Metalworks, and they were our first chance to compete in the barbecue realm. If you didn't know, high school barbecue teams are a real big deal right now. And so, our Potteet Smokehouse competed this year with brisket, chicken, ribs, beans, and a smoked berry pizza. So, I'm sure Chef Rhodes would love to have you come taste anything they're making over I'll remind her that we have taste testers. Okay. We are honored to have a very, very wide range of community members on our advisory committee. We take input from our community, from industry partners, so that we have our students and our programs that are being well-prepared for the workforce. And so, we got to meet with roughly 100 members around April of this year, and they gave us great feedback about our programs, because we're always growing and we're wanting our students to be the best-prepared work candidates once they leave us. These are a list of some of our community partners that we're very lucky and blessed to have working with us. There's a lot, it's like 100, over 100. There's a lot, it's like 100, over 100. Yeah. Do you want to stay put for a minute, or keep going? Okay. And our last thing that we're very, very excited about, we have been able to partner with Lindsey Paris's group this year as our district's first type of STEAM camp this summer that we are calling Camp Excel. And the idea is that we are bringing STEAM and CTE again down to the elementary level, and so these camps will be in July. We're still, registration is still open. It will be housed at Frazier Middle School this year, and we have everything from robotics, art, creative writing, culinary arts, fashion camp, construction camp, and so we are so excited to get to see these campers in a few weeks. If you are available, please stop by. We'd love to have you then. And yeah, so that's, that's what we've been doing in CTE, so. Do you have any?
Very busy.
Very busy.
So Chelsea, how many slots did we originally prepare for, for Camp Excel?
How many slots? I think each camp is capped out at like 20 or 25, and I know some of our camps have sold out. We'll have morning and afternoon sessions for two weeks, so parents and students have the opportunity for, there's four opportunities for camps. And so if kids can go to as many camps during those four sessions as they want to. First through sixth grade, yes. And this is incoming first and sixth grade.
Some are STEAM camp. Is that where you have them?
Yes, yes. We, yeah, some of the districts around us have those, and we were like, well, we need to do that too. So, yeah. Thank you very much.
All right. Now we move to an act of honor session during election of board officers.
I need a motion.
Madam President, I move that this board elect Robert Seward as president, Kevin Carbo as vice president, and Eddie Rose as secretary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bingham. All those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, what?
Please, just go.
Yes, true. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I'll hit the thing. There you go. Motion carried, sir. All right.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Emerging Leaders Program is next, and guess who? I know, it's exciting. Dr. Gully.
Hi, good evening. How are you?
Good.
So I just want to thank you so much for allowing me to come and share just some of the great things that we've been doing with emerging leaders within the Leadership and Empowerment Team Department. Let's start, of course, with our vision, which is, of course, excellence always, and our mission here with Emerging Leaders is to make sure that we're growing empathetic, effective, and resourceful leaders. In fact, this came up today when we were doing this session, when we were talking about how we create learners in our district. Ultimately, our goal is to make sure that we are, that our students are influencing others and that they're having an impact on the community overall. In terms of our framework, we are looking, of course, at all of our students in Mesquite ISD, and we focus really specifically on our high school students. So if you are a ninth grader in Mesquite ISD at any one of our high schools, you can join Emerging Leaders. There are no prerequisites. Ninth and 10th grades are really a focus on learning about diverse and influential leaders. Our students continue that journey in 10th and 11th grades, when they are looking at their own leadership skills and attributes. And then, of course, we finish it up with opportunities for our students to lead and make a positive impact in the community. Also, when you look at CTE and the presentation that was just done, so many of our students are not only just emerging leaders, but they are actually leaders in all facets throughout our district and in all the programs, of course. So what are the tenets of a leader that we focus on here in not only Mesquite, but particularly when we talk about emerging leaders in the program itself? We're looking at effective communication, we're looking at how we develop leadership attributes within our district, we're making sure that our students are very service-minded, and we're also making sure that our students have an appreciation for culture and that they really understand and they can have really serious conversations and make sure that they are honoring everyone in the room at that time. When we look at how we measure emerging leaders, for us, we're looking at several things. We're looking at how many times our students meet throughout the school year. We're looking at the projects that our students develop, community service, scholarship, and of course, impact. When I talk about student meetings, for instance, last year, our students met over 20 times, and those were all very structured meetings, where they had to actually go through assimilation, they had to actually do, go through lessons, where they really looked closely at leadership attributes to figure out, you know, is that a quality that I have? And if it is, how do I continue to nurture that? And if it's something that I don't have, now I can identify it and know that that's something that I can also work on. When we talk about projects, we particularly saw this when we did our Celebration of Knowledge just last month. Our students did everything from auditory to visuals, to film, to art, just everything. And our students really had the opportunity to really shine in their own way, and that's really what Emerging Leaders is all about. It's allowing our students to shine and be their very best at what they choose. Overall, in terms of community service, our students serve our elementary campuses, our middle school campuses, and of course, their own campuses. You can find emerging leaders literally in everything. If you ask our students, are you an emerging leader? Nine times out of 10, those students are going to say, yes, I am in the Emerging Leaders Program. And then finally, when we took, take a look at scholarship and where our students are, as you know, our students earned millions of dollars for not only college, but for a array of different things. Our students, as they crossed that stage a few weeks back, you talk about being really proud, right? Of course, all of our students, but in particular, our emerging leaders that we know we have given a really great foundation as they move forward and really just not only take on Mesquite, but take on the Dallas-Fort Worth area and, of course, the state, right? So when we're talking about what's coming up and what's happening, we are always taking a critical review of our programming, and so we are actually in some talks and discussions. We have had a unique opportunity in terms of moving over into the Department of Strategic Initiatives under the leadership of Dr. Leslie Feinglass, and so we will be really taking a close look in terms of our programming and where it is going moving forward. We're also looking at how we create and continue to create really strong student documents, but that's also looking at the curriculum and our Navigating Excellence course that will be coming up, and that will be and go into state review in September. We're also looking at how we continue to mentor our students. So there is kind of a twofold. So we want to continue to make sure that our students that are now emerging leaders that are in college, that they are still in close connection with students who are here, but also making sure that our students that are here are also having the opportunity to mentor our middle school and our elementary students, so that all those students get a chance to look forward to what's coming up as they continue to matriculate. And of course, we're also looking very closely at our recruitment and retention strategy. What we know is that over 700 students joined Emerging Leaders at the very beginning of the year. However, when we finished up in May, we had right at 500 students, and so we really want to pay closer attention to the retention and how we make sure and ensure that our students earn that 80%, which is the requirement that they need to finish up in three years and ultimately do their portfolio and earn their cord. What are we implementing? We are implementing a middle school component that will start in the fall. Yay, right? So we are really excited about that. We're in talks and discussions. I actually talked with Dr. Feinglass today about how we really connect Amazing Shake with what we do with Celebration of Knowledge, and so we'll be in continued talks about that. We're also looking at our five campuses, and we've chosen five campuses, one in each feeder pattern, that have already signed up, they're ready to go, they are working on curriculum with me, they're also doing several things to make sure that they are in line. Our goal is to really create a strong sixth grade to build connection and a sense of belonging for our seventh and eighth graders as they continue to matriculate forward. And then, of course, what are we continuing? Our Amazing Shake, we're looking at mentoring, and of course, our business partnerships as we move forward. Now, when we talk about strategic planning, right? So we have a lot to really be just excited about as we move forward. We're continuing to grow our participation, we're looking at how we expand our program, we're also looking at Amazing Shake and how to make that more of a cohesive process and a connection, so that our students really see the connection, the flow of leadership throughout our district. Of course, our recruitment and retention, and something that is really new is really looking at the Emerging Leaders Framework and making sure that it is really aligned with our leading-through ownership model that we use for the members in our organization. So we know that we have a lot of work to do, but we are really excited about what is happening, how our students are performing, and ultimately, the leaders that they are becoming. Take a look at these important dates. We are going to be doing Global Denity Day, which is October 16th. We will, of course, have our fall social, so mark your calendars, because we want everyone to be there, on Monday, October 28th. And then, of course, our Celebration of Knowledge, we had a great time in May, but it was also a little hairy, so we're actually pushing that a little forward to make sure that we avoid all UIL and proms that happen in the spring. And so that will happen March 1st of 2025. We have a lot of things going on, but I want to share with you that we should all be so proud, proud of our students, proud of what they're doing, the huge accomplishments that they are making, not only within our school district, but also in our community. And we know we have a lot of work to do, but we are really excited about what is happening. Any questions?
I just want to say, one of the highlights of my year is when I go meet with those kids and talk to them, their focus on leadership and how they ask you questions, it's inspiring. I'm like, yes, you know, we're doing what we need to be doing, so thank you for your program. We're really creating a future for these students to really step out and take ownership of leadership.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I would have to say that when I've talked with them and seen them in action, they've become much more outgoing, they're coming out and introducing themselves, they're jumping into that leadership program and taking that leadership role, and I think kids around them in their schools are seeing that. So hopefully, that's going to filter down, that we get more of them to do that. I went to the Amazing Shake, I don't know if any of the other board members got to go, but if you got a chance, put it on your calendar for next year. It was fantastic to watch these K through 5 students do this Amazing Shake. I was just blown away with what they were able to do, and it was just fantastic. I hope we, I hope we can grow that program.
Absolutely, and I know you also attended our Celebration of Knowledge, which...
It was great.
I was encouraged to hear you all emphasizing on the sixth grade kids, because I know in some of the reports that we've heard, the junior high kids are the ones that are getting lost as far as the belonging and...
They are.
Feeling like they're not connected with, I think, with an adult on campus or other students, and I think that's what translates into high school. When they come into that first step of high school, if they haven't felt that for three years, it's probably not going to change in their high school career going forward. So I'm glad to see that we're looking at that more at the junior highs, I think that'll help quite a bit.
Yeah, exactly. Ms. Davis and I, who is the director of work counseling, we actually had a conversation today about just the data, when we look at panorama data and we look at our sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, we still see a significant decline in a sense of belonging, and so we're just looking really closely at some programming moving forward, and we do believe that this is a great first step in that journey. Okay? All right. Thank you.
Madam President, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, one of the cabinet members, Mr. Taylor Morris, I think he had a different suggestion on the board officers.
Oh.
Oh, he says he doesn't. Okay, I'm sorry.
On our agenda, at this time, we are to conduct a public hearing on proposed school budget and tax rates. We will close our regular meeting and open it to a public hearing for comments on this as posted. Prior to holding a public hearing, we have posted it on our website and in the news. And so, Ms. Jobe, do we have anyone to speak tonight in our public hearing? Okay. Anyone to address the board? As President of the Board, I now declare this meeting closed for public comments. Now, Mr. Prado will come forward, and we will talk about our budget for the 2425 school year, sir.
President Hornsby, Superintendent Rivera, board members, for those new elected officials, congratulations.
Thank you.
For the new highly-paid, new jobs that you earned, congratulations to you as well.
Yeah, it's a new term.
Don't spend it all in one spot. Yes, so thank you very much. Yes, this is the public hearing for the budget. Texas Education Code, Section 44.0002, requires the district to prepare a proposed budget covering all estimated revenue and all proposed expenditures of the district for the coming fiscal year. Section 44.004A requires a public meeting of the Board of Trustees to allow input on the budget, which you just had, and any taxpayer in the district may be present and may participate in the hearing. The budget must be adopted before July 1st, before any expenditure can happen. The adopted budget provides authority to spend funds for the purpose indicated in accordance with state law for policy and the district's approved purchasing procedures. The expenditure of funds shall be under the direction of the superintendent or designee, who shall ensure that funds are expended in accordance with the adopted budget. So I will give a quick presentation here. Before I do that, I do want to thank the staff that tirelessly worked on this product. Kimberly Chappell, the Executive Director of Finance, is here in the back. They're the only ones here in the back. Mr. Trace Naylor, the Budget Director, I certainly want to give him thanks for providing and having a lot of work being put into this number. I always say, you know, one page of numbers really requires a lot of work, and so you will see that product as we move forward.
I noticed they did not want to sit up closer to the front, though.
I see that. I also want to thank the cabinet. The cabinet has been very supportive, and the superintendent in developing this expenditure budget and the revenue budget that we will present. Again, thank you very much for the input. This is the agenda. It's a lot of bullets, but we'll go quickly through it. We'll talk about the general operating budget, the food service budget, the debt service, the legal requirements, property value trends, property tax rates, projected preliminary increases and decreases. I'll touch a little bit about the health insurance rates that are included in this budget, projected average daily attendance, the projected fund balance, revenue comparison, expenditure breakdown, and the proposed budgets, which you will then consider approval of. The three funds that you must approve are the debt service, food service, and the general operating, and those are the ones that we'll focus on. The revenue assumptions here include, obviously, utilizing the current funding formulas. We also saw a decrease in CHARs, School Health and Related Services, revenue, so that is included in here. Indirect cost implications, ESAR is, it's the last year, so any indirect cost that we're generating from ESAR will go away. Student enrollment projections is around 38,000, it has leveled off from our highs. Average daily attendance is predicted around 95%, and then again, the tax rates are 0.69, it's actually 0.6969, is projected for the maintenance and operations, and the debt service at 40 for a total tax rate of 1.969. The taxable value that we'll talk about, I used a 10% property value increase, but that again is subject to change, our tax values are increasing considerably this year. Expenditure assumptions, we obviously budgeted to our priority security some programs. We did a deep compensation study that Tasby helped us with, and that is included in this budget presentation, implementing some of the areas that were, that were recommended. Pre-K expansion, we added 16 teachers, 16 TAs to increase our capacity at the pre- Pre-K expansion, we added 16 teachers, 16 TAs to increase our capacity at the pre-K level. And again, we addressed the staffing plan for some of the campuses. As I mentioned, employee benefits and health insurance were addressed. We are budgeting a spend rate around 98% for payroll and at 94% for non-payroll. There are three legal requirements, whether more requirements, but there's three main legal requirements. One is a public notice where we let the community know what our tax rate is anticipated to be, what our budget is, what our property values are anticipated to be, what our debt is, tax rate comparison, the proposed levy from previous year compared to the average residence of this year, any voter approval rate that we cannot exceed in our fund balance projections. All of this is captured in a third-page ad that we have done. We actually advertised this in the Daily Commercial Record on May 31st, and that is due 10 days prior to holding this meeting. So, we met that requirement. We also posted on our website a comparison of the amended budget, current amended budget compared to what the next year's budget looks like. And of course, we had the public hearing a minute ago. So, those are all requirements that we must have, and we have met that. Property value trends, I want to spend a little bit of time here. As you can see from this chart, those bars towards the end of 2024, there is considerable property increases in Mesquite, specifically for Mesquite ISD. In 2024, the preliminary estimates of values is about 16.4 billion. That is an increase from 12.9 billion of last year. Again, I notated that in 2015, the homestead exemption increased from 15,000 to 25,000. In 2021, homestead exemption increased from 25 to 40K. In 2023, the homestead exemption that we all voted for increased from 40,000 to 100,000. So, again, that is the state doing, trying to get some tax compression. And that is what's happening in our economic here in Mesquite ISD. Considerable increase is what you can take away from this slide. And I do want to remind all of our taxpayers that all of these values are, come from the district, Central Appraisal District. They are the ones that do our appraisals, and it's not the school district. And again, we collect our taxes and the state benefits from any property value trends that are increasing. With that said, the property tax rates by district, we did an analysis of Dallas County. And I want to highlight Mesquite ISD as one of the lowest in the maintenance and operations tax entities. We are at 0.6992 currently. Again, we won't know our tax rate, but it's anticipated to be 0.6969 for next year. The only other district below us, as you can see from this slide, is Garland ISD at 0.6692. I do want to state that every other district on this slide in Dallas County has a higher tax rate for the maintenance and operations. And these are the districts that we compete with. So, again, this is a good slide. It's a great takeaway to let our taxpayers know that we have been very judicious with the tax dollars that we do collect from our taxpayers, one of the lowest. And of course, 40 cents for the INS. Before I skip, no, that's fine. Some of the items that we proposed increases, again, the compensation study, salary equity adjustment is the big ticket item here at approximately $8 million. We also increased personnel requests for special education. As I mentioned earlier, pre-K expansion. Insurance for property and auto has continuously increased the last couple of years. So, again, you can see that we're putting about $150,000 for that. We're also funding summer school before we were funding it from ESAR funds. So, again, we're moving it to the general operating funds. We're expanding the excellence in E-Tip and other requests, custodial supplies. Everything's getting more expensive, as you can see. So, again, there is a lot of increases, a lot of things that we're putting into the budget that are priorities for our district. But the biggest piece here you can see is for compensation, to the tune of 18.9 million in new increases. In terms of decreases, there wasn't many, but we are doing away with the attendance incentive. And we also decreased some staffing positions at the elementary level and high schools. But again, they were offset by some of the ads on the previous slide. Projected fund rates, I'm going to switch gears a little bit. This is related to our insurance rates. As you are fully aware, we became self-insured. This is our first year, so we're going into our second year of being self-insured. We are offering three plans for the coming year. As you can see from this slide, maybe not small, but we will be funding three plans. And I'll give you some statistics here. Approximately 3769 employees take advantage of this plan or one of these plans. The majority of participants are employee-only. There are about 2,814 employee and spouse, 64 employee children, 811, and employee and families, about 80. Our monthly funding rates are increasing from about 29.5 million to 33.5 million. That is the new plan. Off that plan, employee contributions will be increasing. We share a cost that the district will provide a subsidy, significant subsidy. And the employees will also contribute more depending on the plan that they pick. Again, the employees will be contributing approximately, assuming that all the other number data stay the same, about 13.2 million, while the district will be subsidizing the plan to the tune of $20.2 million. I will say that the monthly subsidy that the district will be providing differs depending on the plan. For employee-only, it's an average of about $419. For employee and spouse, it's about $209. For employee and children, it's $500. And for employee and family, 450. That is an average around the 400 and something dollar figure. Year-over-year changes, you will see, I just want to touch on a couple of things. This year, employees were contributing approximately 10.3 million towards our self-insurance. Next year is going to be 13.3. And again, that's an increase of about $3 million from employees. And the contributions will depend on the plan that we choose. So, for example, for an employee-only plan, the monthly increase will range from $18 to $32, depending on the plan. And then, for employee and spouse, it would go from 129 to approximately 144 for EPOB. And for employee and children, it will go from $148 to $196 if you choose the EPOA. And then, for employee and family, it will range between $270 and $354 per month. The general increases in terms of percentages will vary by plan. Again, we were trying to keep the increases, this is two years' worth of increases because we kept the same rates this current year, and we were trying to keep it under 30%. And so, we have accomplished that. But in some instances, for example, employee and children, there will be significant increases above 30%. Switching gears, I do want to just say that this budget is, as I mentioned earlier, based on an average daily attendance of about 95% and for an enrollment of about 38,000 kids. Our enrollment has leveled off. We used to be several years ago, over 40,000. And again, through the COVID years, we lost some enrollment, but we have leveled off. And this is the slide, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention it. But you can see here the chart, back in 2019, 2020, we were around 95.8 attendance rate. And then, it decreased over the years. And now, we're hopeful that we'll continue that trend upwards. Overall, this budget will be in a deficit of $28 million. And I mentioned to you before, this is a structural deficit. You can see in the assumptions that we have built in already 98% spend rate for personnel and 94% for non-personnel. That means we're narrowing the gap of what our revenue will be versus our expenses. So, if you're used to saying that this is a $28 million budget deficit, and then we'll add to the fund, that's not going to happen in this budget, unless for some miraculous reason, we get revenue from sources that I don't know where that would be from, unless the state makes some sort of contribution during this coming year, which I don't anticipate. Our fund balance will continue to go down if no additional revenue is anticipated. So, we're anticipating a fund balance in 2024 of around 80 million, while for the current year, we are predicting around 108. And hopefully, we'll even up a little bit depending when we close out the year. We still have a month, and there's a lot of work to be done. But we're hopeful that we will, when you approved a balanced budget in last year, that we will meet that criteria. It might be a little bit below that, it might be slightly above. So, that's where we'll be at. In terms of revenue comparison, again, the state has accomplished what they stated in terms of tax compression. You will see that in, no, you won't. In 2324, a revenue breakdown, 29% was from local revenue. That means we were collecting it, the city was collecting it for us. Now, the, well, the city of Mesquite. Now, it will be the city of Dallas that will help us with that. And 67% is state revenue and 4% was federal. The federal revenue is going to decrease because ESAR is going away. So, that will be only 2% for the next year, 25% local, and 73% coming from the state. Again, property values are continuing to increase. Our taxes continue to either stay the same or increase that we're paying and the beneficiaries of any of these increases is not the school district. We are on a per-student base. It is the state that will generate additional funds related to this property values increases. And you can kind of see how that is happening in terms of this revenue comparison. Expenditure breakdown, I just wanted to point out that most of our resources, about 60%, go to direct instruction of our kids. That is function 11, as we describe it. We talk about functions in accounting. But again, the majority of our resources are directly, I keep forgetting. Get a prompt, I need a prompt. Again, the majority of our expenses are directly tied to our students. This is teachers, teacher assistance, teacher campus expenditures, all direct impact to our students. So, with that said, that is the general operating budget. The food service budget has been doing really well. Our participation rates have increased, and they will continue to increase. We are spending down some of the fund balance for food services. You will see that our budget for next year is predicted at around $3.6 million budget deficit. But that is a planned, so that we can get under the threshold that the state requires or the federal government require us to keep it at. And the debt service budget is increasing. It's going from about $58 million or $59 million to approximately $63.4 million. Now, that is one benefit that we do get from the property value increases because we kept the rate at 0.40. And so, therefore, with property value, we will be collecting more. And again, we'll consider and look at our fund balance as we move along and to see if we can pay off some debt early. So, this is the budget that you will consider approving in the next item. Again, it includes the general operating, the debt service, and the Child Nutrition Services Fund. Budget calendar, we're waiting for certified values, July 25th. We get our certified value property values, August. The state tells us what our tax rate will be. And then, in September, on September 9, we'll adopt the actual tax rate. And with that said, I want to bring up Dr. Hensley to touch on a couple of slides related to compensation.
As Mr. Prado said in his presentation, compensation is a part of this budget that you'll be approving this evening. We did want to take a moment and do a review of just a couple of high points from my presentation from last month. And so, oh, I have it. So, as far as compensation goes, we are operating off of TASB recommendations. Mr. Prado and I mentioned last month that we spent a good amount of time with TASB reviewing our pay systems and then reviewing their recommendations. So, TASB recommendations are as such. We're, number one, implementing pay structure adjustments to align with market. This includes strong starting salaries and midpoints aligned with market. Number two, adopt a general pay increase, or GPI, to maintain market position. That includes a 2% raise for all job groups. That equates to $1,300 per continuing teacher, and that amount is prorated for contract days above 187. For the teacher's structure, the GPI is calculated as a percentage of market median salary. It's 64,670, but rounded up to 65,000. For other pay groups, the GPI is calculated as a percentage of employees' pay grade midpoints. Additionally, TASB recommended adjustments to address market differences and maintain equity. And that was an amount also that Mr. Prado mentioned in his presentation. With Laura Jobe's department, thank you to her, they created a one-pager. That's a great way to look at compensation overall for our teachers. And so, this is an enhanced teacher compensation one-pager. Our starting salary, we're recommending at 62,000 for zero-year teachers starting in our district. We're recommending a 2% pay raise for current employees. We're recommending, actually, this just outlines further compensation benefits. And so, we outline here our care clinic where free counseling services are offered. Our Mesquite Employee Health Center, which includes a clinic and pharmacy, is also a compensation feature for our employees. We include stay pay. We have payment for unused state sick, local sick, local personal, and state personal leave days upon retirement, which is rare. I don't think I've ever seen that before. We also have high-need area stipends for our bilingual teachers, sped self-contained and sped teachers. And then, we also have the E-Tip program, which is also something I've not seen before in other districts where teachers can earn up to 12,000 annually. And that concludes the compensation recap.
That was the last order than mine. But will there entertain any questions that any of you might have?
Go ahead.
How does the teacher's starting pay compare with other districts? Do we know what other Dallas-area districts we'll be offering?
I don't have specifics on that, but I was reviewing, I have a HR cohort that I'm a member of, and several of those leaders were conducting sort of an informal look at what starting salaries were. And I was really pleased, we seem to be higher than most. I think we're right in line with Garland, they might be 100 or two more. I can't remember exactly what they said, but when I was looking at most of the districts, we were above. So, I was pleasantly surprised to see that at 62,000.
And Ms. Rivera, some of the districts are not, whether they go through it or not, because I don't know what they passed in their board meeting, they were not adding increases to the salary, they were doing them as stipends instead of increases to salaries. But there's all kind of problems, well, differences, I wouldn't say problems with that. It won't count for retirement, and it will not be an occurring expense for the following year. They need to cut it because it's a stipend, they can actually take it away and not affect their budget. So, there's, different districts are, depending on their budget year. If they're September, they haven't announced yet what they're going to do yet. But the July ones are starting to have their board meetings this week and next week, so we'll know.
Can you go back a slide? So, when you're talking about other pay groups, if I fall in the other pay group and if my raise is calculated off of midpoint. Yeah, we discussed last month how my pay raise would be different than someone else's based on where we currently are in relation to midpoint. Is that correct?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So, I think I understand what he's asking. Let me take this one. So, if you and I are in pay grade professional three,
Right.
you and I are in the same pay grade, there's a mid, there's a, there's a starting, right? There's a low, there's a mid, and there's a max. There's a low, there's a mid, and there's a max. So you have more years of experience, or you're probably making more than me as a salary, and I'm making less. But because the 2% will be calculated off of the midpoint, we will both get the same increase because we're in the same pay grade, same position. Does that make sense?
A little. But so basically, they're going to take a, they're going to be educated on how to calculate what the raise is going to be.
No, they have to do it. It's actually, you don't have to calculate it based on your salary, it's on the midpoint. So whatever the 2% is, for example, in the presentation that Dr. Hensley gave you, teachers, regardless of where they are, and most of our teachers fall below the midpoint, will get a $1,300 raise off of the medium salary, which is what we consider market. So every teacher, regardless of the years of experience, will get a $1,300 raise, and that will keep up the current separations that they have on their pay grade now. Because if we remember correctly, last year, we gave a 6% to 8% to teachers, so it created a bigger gap. We're trying to reestablish that gap to stay the same.
Right. But going forward, then, is midpoint going to be our goal?
For setting compensation, yes.
So I think the question I sent y'all earlier today was, if you have someone entering into a pay grade now, it's a different pay grade, a promotion or whatever, then how do they determine what kind of, is there transparency or some kind of formula where they know, okay, I'm getting promoted to assistant principal, I have 15 years' experience? Are they going to be, are they entering into that pay grade at the midpoint or below the midpoint? Where are they entering into that pay grade at? How are they going to know what's my salary going to be going into this position?
When employees are offered either a promotion or coming into the district, there's a lot of calculations that go into place. For example, if I'm coming from outside the district and I'm coming in as a lateral with X amount of years of experience, personnel department usually has a formula they use through the TASB model to calculate adding X percent to the salary for every year of experience in that role. However, if you're getting promoted, that's a whole different grade because you're entering a different pay grade. So you may not have experience, and you may enter in a position that is not even aligned with the current skills that you have in your current job. So in that case, no, sir, you will not enter at the midpoint, you will enter at the entry-level position as salary for that range because you don't have any experience.
So you're going to come in at the minimum?
Correct.
So how, okay. How long does it take? How many years does it take you to get to the midpoint? And then we have this maximum out there that no one, it's not achievable. So why do we still publish a maximum in our pay scale if it's an unachievable goal?
Because the ranges are put in place through the TASB model. Now, we're not compensation experts, but we do know that that midpoint is what we consider market value for X position. And so TASB continues to move that. Will we move it with inflation? Absolutely not. But you're not, if you're in the same position as you go in, and then let's just say I have 20 years of experience in Mesquite, and I'm going to transfer to X district, well, I should be around the midpoint if I'm transferring, depending how they calculate. Now, we use the TASB model. I can't predict what any other district would use, but you have to have a certain scale to base your salaries, and you've got to be consistent. Otherwise, we have what we have now, which we have people with the same amount of years of experience in the same role making different salaries.
Right. And how are we going to fix that is one of the questions that nobody's ever been able to answer. When you have four people with 15 years' experience making different salaries, and then here comes someone else with 15 years' experience, where are we going to put these folks?
Well, if you remember, this is why we recruited the services of TASB, because we're not compensation experts, and this has been occurring in Mesquite, I will say, for over 30 years, that different people have been setting salaries, and we haven't really followed the model. I wish I could answer your question, tell you it's going to be fixed next year, but it's not. This is going to take time. As we continue to be consistent setting salaries in our district, it's only going to take time. I will tell you, I probably won't even see it in my tenure as superintendent, but hopefully down the line, as we go in, if we consistently set salaries the same way, over time, we're going to be consistent, and everybody's going to be compensated fairly.
Okay.
This is an action item to approve.
Did you?
Did you have some?
Oh, okay.
Eddie has his slide on.
Okay. Eddie has his slide on, yeah.
I can turn it off.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate all the work on the budget this year. I've been, I think I've been on the board 28 years now, and this is the first year we have planned to have a deficit budget. And I would also follow that very quickly, but this is one of the most efficient school districts and the most well-run organizations you will ever find, and we're known for that in the school business. This is precarious times for public education. A lot of our sister districts around the state and around the neighborhood are going through similar things, and some of them are worse off than we are. This is a statewide problem. It's being passed down to us. You might hear something out of Austin that says schools have just misappropriated their money or didn't spend it wisely. I would tell you that is not the case in this district. This is a state funding problem, and when a district like Mesquite has to budget a significant deficit, like we're going to budget, $28 million deficit budget, that ought to wake up some of our patrons.
Voters.
And I just want to tell you, I much appreciate, I know that team back there has really worked hard, and everybody's worked hard on this, and it's not, it's not an easy thing to do as a board member to pass a deficit budget like this, but we have to because of the situation with our state funding. But I just wanted our voters out there to hear, and our patrons to hear that from me and from this board.
I appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Well, the basic allotment has not changed in five years since 2019.
That's correct.
And something has to give. If the state were to increase the basic allotment just $1,000 per student, that would mean an additional $38 million for Mesquite ISD, which we would desperately be able to use that in an efficient manner as well.
There's also a big problem, and I was referring to that earlier, but this last legislative session, there was money for public education. There was $5 billion that was held back, and that's another fight that we're going to have to face again. And I know Dr. Feinglass has been leading that fight for the district, and some of us are with her, going and paving the walkways over there in Austin. But we're going to have to be a little stronger or get more results from our legislators in Austin because by changing the rules, they want it to seem that the districts are not doing their due diligence, and that is not the case. They're just holding us hostage at this point.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are. I agree.
You know, trustees, before you vote on this, I also want to weigh in. So one of the things that we started telling our staff is that there were two things that we promised our staff when we started building this budget. Number one is that we're not going to make significant personnel cuts. And number two, which I stand behind 100%, is that we're not going to cut programming for our kids. I think opportunities for our kids is what we stand for in our district, providing the best education to prepare our kids for whatever they want to do when they leave us, and I think that is the charge. So I appreciate the support that you're giving us. I know this is a tough thing, but other districts have cut positions, have cut programs, have cut significant things for kids. And although we cannot hold out forever with this, we, I think we can hold, we can tighten up our belts and for one year, provide what we can for our kids as best we know how, and I'll leave it at that.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? This is an action item.
Madam President, I move that we approve the budget for 2024 through 2025 for the school year as proposed by Mr. Gilbert.
Second. Mr. Seward is second by Mr. Carbo. Is there any discussion? All those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. You have your budget, Mr. Prado. Okay. Our next one is approve a resolution of the adoption of committing fund balances.
Yes, thank you again. Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 54 requires that special revenue funds be used to account for and report the proceeds of specific revenue sources that are restricted or committed to expenditure for specific purposes other than debt service or capital projects. The funds that have been reported as local special revenue funds have specific revenue sources but are not restricted by an outside party. Therefore, to continue to report them as local special revenue funds, the board will need to commit the following fund balances for campus, as the list has campus activity funds, replay talk fund, miscellaneous grants, and those listed in this document. And there's a resolution for approval as well.
So move, Ms. Bingham is your second. Ms. Collier, okay. Any other discussion? Those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And the other action item, approve budget amendment 2324 budget.
Yes. So this is the final budget amendment that you will see for the current 2324 budget year. As you know, we try to predict, project where we'll end up the year, and we have great staff that takes this to the very next level in terms of performance. And so we are proposing three amendments, one for the general operating fund, one for the food service fund, and one for the debt service fund. And it is to align revenue, end-of-year revenue projections in all categories, and the mix between state and local in terms of the general operating, and then the expenditures as well to line them up by function as to where we think the end of the year will be. And then, of course, you get all these results once the audit is completed in November. So that is for the general operating. In terms of the debt service, or I mean, the food service, revenue again has been increasing, so we need to capture that because of more participation. And then the expenditures, they didn't spend all the money that they were intending to spend. So again, we reduce the expenditures, so they will have additional resources. And then the debt service, again, we're just estimating what our end of the year will be.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. And who's second? Okay. All right. Greg Everett. Okay. This is an action item. Is there any more discussion? Okay. Those approve, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Yes. And I believe that's it. Ms. Jobis, or anything? Anything? We are adjourned at 8:03.